I'd like to bring the meeting to order, and just as a point of order, you'll notice that the clerk is not here because she's in clerk school. So don't worry, the minutes will be transcribed because this is all going to be recorded. So they'll take the minutes from that transcription of the tape. And with that, I would ask Reverend Alderman Davis to please do the invocation.
Almighty God, most loving and gracious God, we thank you for the many blessings you bestow upon Southport today and every day. We ask today and always that you guide us to make good and right decisions for the good of all Southport. Amen.
Okay, the city manager will call off the one person who is on the list to speak.
Jason Robbins.
Good morning. I'm Jason Robbins. I am here in my capacity as broker in charge of the Kohlvenker Seacoast Advantage Office at 108 South Davis Street specifically to address item two on your agenda today about the event ordinance and process improvement. Very glad to see this on the agenda. These wonderful events that we have downtown in Southport are fantastic, and I don't think anybody would question that. But I do think there are some ways that it could be better for the people who are in businesses that are directly impacted by the out-of-the-ordinary situations that naturally come of those events. Just to talk to my own experience and that of the people in my office and my business, when the streets are closed, especially Davis Street, which I face on too, for those of you who can't immediately visualize it, that's the street that runs between East Moore and East Bay, across from the, and my office is across from the Maritime Museum and the Visitor Center. When the streets close, FedEx and UPS won't come, the mail often doesn't deliver, GPS sends people, including clients, in the wrong direction, staff and customers sometimes have to move vehicles, people with limited physical mobility can't get into my office, literally can't get in to the office, can't even be dropped off in front where they can get in. So everything, you know, everyday business gets sidetracked for the duration, and all of these things have to be compensated for. It's not a tremendous amount of work and trouble, but it does need time and notice and awareness so that we can make alternate arrangements. As I said, I do think we can do better with that. Perhaps this is the price of paradise, as they say. But these things are planned and arranged and paid for months in advance. Everybody knows when the bollards are coming in to block off the road, when the portable toilets are getting dropped over on the garrison lawn. The rented equipment is being paid for by the day, so it's not a surprise to an awful lot of people when this stuff happens. But in regard to the most recent couple of festivals and events that led to the streets being blocked, I didn't find out, people in my office didn't find out until the blockages were already happening. And obviously, we've been here for years. We all know festivals coming, but it's always a day back and forth every year, and it's really hard to plan for. So I hope that we can improve that. I've heard from an awful lot of people commiserating during the moment when everybody's feelings are raw about annoyances, that they don't feel like Southport is doing enough to proactively communicate stuff like this. So not to beat a dead horse, I would encourage you all to workshop this with the people in the areas most affected, South House Street, South Davis Street, East Bay Street, East Nass Street, East Moore Street, perhaps. You know your business. I think everybody's working really hard and appreciate all that, appreciate these wonderful events. Don't get me wrong at all. But a little more help, a little more forethought with this aspect of things would be much appreciated, and I think it's in order. Thank you.
We have two emailed comments. The first one is from Andrew Miller. "I would like to comment on the recent Southport license plate design competition. While I do not believe my submission, which was a finalist, should have won, the transparency seems lacking. The submission that was chosen was the one using an example when entering the contest. If someone who worked for the city submitted to the design, that is fine, as I work in government as well and like to participate in contests like this. However, it seems like a waste of time and money to just choose the example. I would like the transparency on the design and who created it, because it seems like it was a shoo-in the whole time. I know myself and many other participants feel this way. Thank you for your time." The second is from Roscoe Ingles. "I am a property owner of two houses in the historic section of Southport. I strongly oppose the regulations being proposed on our homes for the historic committee by the historic committee." That's all.
Thank you, sir. The next topic on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
And there's a move, the motion and a second. Any conversation? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. The next topic is special recognition. John, the little red light is already on for you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate your time this morning. Two and a half years ago, I came before this board to explain my vision for the future of the North Carolina Maritime Museum here at Southport. One of those items was to bring an activity, living history, like we saw on July 19th. I wanted to say it was successful beyond our wildest imaginations. We had numerous people throughout the program taking headcounts to get an accurate number of what was here. We counted 220 people that came in here to listen to our speakers. 387 people were standing in the heat waiting for infantry and artillery to be shot off. It really made me feel very impressed to be a part of this community and also the support that were received from this community as well. As a part of our planning process, we did reach out to the Coast Guard to let them know what was going on. We were thankful for the police to show up and actually have a boat out there for our safety ranges, which as somebody who has gone through 15 years of state training for black powder weapon safety, Shannon Walker has as well, we are qualified in everything 18th century, 19th century, and I'm 20th century weapons qualified. The big thing is, we wanted to make sure that this was a safe weekend and that people had fun and people learned. We estimated through our numbered counts that we had a little over 1,500 people show up for that hot weekend to see what was going on. Without the support of the city, without those volunteers coming out to help us, this would not have been the miraculous program to help kick off the state's 250th anniversary programming that most people will focus in on next year. Our plans are to continue going until 2033. Most people are thinking, wow, that's a long time. Well, the Revolutionary War took eight years. The Cape Fear will not become a major combatant zone until 1781, which is about five years, six years from now, so expect great things to come back around as well. We are working with Bald Head Island to talk about the British invasion of Bald Head Island in September of 1776. Patriot forces left Fort Johnston Road across the Cape Fear River and attacked a British stronghold that had been set up on that island. So we may end up doing something at the end of next year. We look forward to working with you and to bring these living history programs together. We would also like to do other time periods as well that reference what Fort Johnston was and the history of this area, whether it's World War II. It would be nice to have this open up as a USO for maybe one night and have World War II reenactors come back in. We have, I have the records of the USO that was stationed here during World War II. We're going through them, all the activities that were happening here, all the people that were working here. There was a lady who was volunteering to be a babysitter, so women could volunteer here at the USO to help those servicemen who were away from home. We want to tell these stories. We've always been about telling these stories. We service six counties in this area. That's 761,000 people. While we are centered on Fort Johnston, we want to be able to bring people from all of those counties here to understand our history and why it's important. Again, I wanted to say thank you so much for all your help, for all that you did, for the community services that came to be a part of it. If anybody has any questions about how we made the program planning and how we look to go into the future, I welcome anybody to come by and ask me, what happened? How did you do this? What were your thinking on this? I'd be more than happy to talk with you. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. The next agenda item is the Animal Protective Services, Alderman Mossdeller.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to begin by clarifying that this is a discussion about reinstating the Animal Protective Services Department as a separate department. It is not a discussion about personnel. This is about the future of the APS department and the APS officer being the department head. I feel like I have to say, I know that we have an excellent police department, and I appreciate the previous comments of our police chief. I know he was on the board when we made the changes that ultimately resulted in the development of the APS department. My reasoning for wanting to reinstate the APS department as a standalone department is about the future of Animal Protective Services in our community. It is not about the police department. This is a conversation about APS. Maintaining the quality of the APS department and program in our community will depend on the professionalism background and experience of the next APS officer. In order to maintain the high standards and services of our APS program, we have to be able to recruit a next-level animal welfare subject matter expert that has the ability to understand and the skills to implement our unique ordinance, make ordinance update recommendations as needed, implement and promote our TNR program, continue the kitten foster program, plan workshops and community events that foster positive animal welfare education, write grants, oversee the annual licensing program, develop relationships with state and national organizations, develop and maintain working relationships with North Carolina Wildlife, local nonprofits, and rescue organizations, work with area vets to develop relationships that might, that help provide the emergency care and support, and support the TNR program, manage the Animal Protective Services webpage content, and more. These duties and responsibilities are very different from the job of a sworn police officer, and it makes no sense for this position to be sandwiched into the chain of command of the police department, as indicated on the org chart between detectives and sergeants and supervised by one of our lieutenants in the police department. Animal welfare is a different discipline, and in Southport, it came into its own because our community decided seven years ago that we had the opportunity to come together and be our best selves by adopting a comprehensive ordinance that shifted the paradigm in our community from an animal control model to an animal welfare approach. We are a community that has prioritized the welfare of our animals and wildlife. Our community values are reflected in our animal welfare ordinance. We talk a lot about volunteerism in our community. Not all the volunteers are as visible as when we are doing the monthly beautification cleanups. Dr. Travis, this is volunteerism and the working relationship between River Road Animal Hospital, Dr. Travis, and our Animal Protective Services Department is part of the next-level success of our animal welfare program. Dr. Travis lives in Southport, and she has supported our community's animal welfare commitment from the very beginning. Among other things, her expertise provided the basis for minimum outside housing requirements for dogs and the minimum standards for the carriage to her horses. Since the city created an Animal Protective Services Department in 2018, Dr. Travis has supported and participated in the APS TNR Community CAP program and has helped the APS department provide humane emergency medical attention for injured and failing animals. Dr. Travis allowed the city to locate Southport's temporary holding facility structure on the River Road property. Dr. Travis has quietly helped our community deliver on a commitment to animal welfare in Southport. Dr. Travis's contributions are part of the success of Animal Protective Services. It is the, it is relationships like this that require a department head-level APS professional, a department head that has the authority to represent the APS department and create relationships with local vets, North Carolina Wildlife, state and national organizations, nonprofits, and local rescue groups. Why is this, why is all this important? It takes all of this and much more. Who are we as a community? What is our commitment to animal welfare? We got this right, and for five years, Animal Protective Services operated as a separate department and became recognized as a next-level animal welfare program by the state, by state and national organizations and other communities wishing to improve and look more like what our organization looks like. Recognizing this, I would like to make a motion to reinstate our Animal Protective Services Department as a standalone department, reporting directly to the city manager with, with the APS officer serving as the department head, effective immediately.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. And so what takes place now, ladies and gentlemen, is a discussion amongst the board.
I thought you prefaced your remarks by saying this was discussion only, not a vote.
I would like to begin clarifying. I don't think I said...
You did.
Today? Yeah. Well, I did not mean, I'm sorry, I did not...
That you were bringing this up for discussion, not for a vote.
I don't know that I'm...
Well, in any case, it's, she's made a motion, it's a second, so...
I'm sorry. I meant, I didn't mean it that way. I meant that we could, I made the motion so now we can have the discussion.
Before I could say anything, I'd like to hear from the police chief, who is currently supervising APS, the APS officer, as well as from the city manager, because if the, if APS is going to be a separate department instead of a division of the police department, then the city manager is going to be the supervisor. So which one of you will speak first?
Also, also, Alderman Davis, you had said before in the earlier meeting in April that you also wanted Kate Marshall to be able to answer questions. Asked her here, so she's here as that, so she's available to.
Good.
Chief, go ahead.
Good morning.
Hello, do you have specific questions of the chief?
I'll start. I'm just trying to catch my breath, because I want you to know how...
Go ahead.
How...
I'm sorry, can I say something before we get, before we get started?
Go ahead.
Is this not a personnel issue that the city manager should be handling, not the board?
It, my understanding, and the city manager can correct me, but this is about departmental. We, the board, I can tell you this, in 2018, the board created a position for Animal Protective Services that was a direct report to the city manager. That was, the board did that in 2018. So...
So, so yes, it could go either way. I think my understanding is, it was on its own that the board created Bonnie there, and the former manager moved it's on its own. It could be either authority, there is a statute that says the board can create, abolish, amend, or change the structure of city departments. So I think it would be proper for the board to have that motion if they wanted to, as long as we don't veer too far into the personnel realm.
Thank you.
Question to the police chief, Chief Coring, is how is it working now from your point of view, and do you think it works well or badly?
Well, since we were asked to take on APS, that one manager there, Ian was here, she had a lengthy discussion with me, and we decided to take it on under the police department. I've got experience, extensive experience as an Animal Protective Services officer. It was animal control back early on, Ms. Mossdeller. That's just what it was titled. I feel like we have done well. I wrote down some pros and cons. However, Ms. Marshall is here in the audience who has resigned. This has taken me by total surprise since our budget meeting earlier last year when y'all discussed it in front of me, and there seemed to be a concern that I was not aware of. I asked you then, Ms. Mossdeller, after that meeting, was there some issues? Because y'all went into a big discussion, and you told me you were talking to me about that later, and we've not talked about that since then. But it appears you're saying, I understand you saying, under the police department, we have a great police department. I appreciate that. I certainly hope that we do. I hope that we're serving the citizens of Southport well. I feel like we have served the citizens well with APS in our department. When we brought Ms. Marshall on, we've had several discussions with Ms. Marshall about her coming and working with us. We did not change anything about APS. We've not changed her appearance, her uniform, the vehicle, where she was stationed, the temporary holding facility at Dr. Travis's location. I feel like we also have a good relationship with Dr. Travis. I've known her for many years. We've served on the Fourth of July Board of Directors for many years before APS was even under our department. So, but since the discussion, I asked Ms. Marshall after that board meeting that day, what was going on, because I was so surprised. She said she had no recollection, did not know why you brought that up. I asked her, were there any issues? She didn't, she's not expressed any issues to me. But she has resigned. She went to our city manager with her resignation. I was called by the manager. I was in a meeting in Charlotte, met with him, and she has resigned. She did not come to me with her resignation. She did sit down with me, I think, last, early last week. I went on vacation last week. I was gone all week. I just got back Saturday. But she spoke with me briefly about her resignation and said that she didn't have an issue with the police department. We've had a great working relationship with Kate. I think things are going well, to answer your question. The officers worked well with her. We've had a lot of strengths, I think, with her coming and working with us. The officers worked good with her. She's been helping them train on calls. They go to calls with her. A lot of stuff she does on her own, but when she needs help, alligator calls and things like that, the officers have learned a lot from her, to the point where she has recommended a couple of the officers go be trained with wildlife trappers. We're trying to get that set up now before her resignation. So while I was gone last week on vacation, our part-time officer, Mr. Corey, he came to the office, I guess, and resigned, left a bag with all his keys and has resigned. I don't, I don't know what's going on. I thought we were doing a good job. I would hope that if we're not, the manager would call me in his office and say, chief, we've got some problems. I haven't had any citizens that I know of come to us with problems. I'm very passionate about this too, Ms. Mossdeller, because I was on the board when all of that happened. happened, when it was under the police. But I feel like there's something wrong. I feel like I'm kind of on trial with this, if you will. But I, I mean, I've got a list of stuff, Ms. Lo Davis, that I think it's working well to say all that. But I just wanted to say how off-guard I feel about this and how it's kind of taking me back a little bit, because I have talked with Kate a lot, and we've had some discussions, and I ask her, you know. So it's, it's very personal to me on several levels, so I render back to you, ma'am. I think it's working good.
If the, if APS became a separate department, would your department be as able to assist, particularly as we know in our alligator issues these days? Would you, would you still know that things are going on, that your officers are needed for assistance?
Well, communications is one thing that has strengthened since she's been working with us. She's, was given a radio, she was put in our computer aided dispatch, so when she's working her regular hours, her Monday, her daily hours, they radio her on the radio to dispatch her to a call. The officers hear that. If she needs assistance, they go to help her. The officers will go take bike reports for her at Dozier Hospital when she's not working. The officers have been doing that. They were doing that before she worked under police. They would go take the reports for her to keep her from having to come all the way back into Southport. So there's a lot of communication, some things that we have strengthened, putting her in our computer aided dispatch, assigning her radio, knowing when she's working and where she's at and those kinds of things. So I don't know, it may, the communications have strengthened, our communication centers reached out to me different times and said they appreciated her building a CAD placeholder, is what it's called in CAD, so that knows she's working, they can call her directly now, before they would have to call her on her work phone, and they would notify her, and she would go to the calls, and sometimes, or most of the time, we didn't know where she was or what she was doing. Now, that's not to say that she didn't need us or does need us. She's, she's well capable of doing a lot of things. But I think it's better that we know where she is in case she does need us. I mean, I don't know to answer that, what we know or how it would work, but I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna keep on. I've already talked with the wildlife folks. She had them meet with us. She set up some meetings. Again, another surprise, I mean, I've got a meeting with Dr. Travis at 12 o'clock today, because I was told we needed to meet with her about our mutual agreement. So all of this is kind of snowballing, happening kind of quick, but I feel like we've got a, we have an interim person in place, Officer Ward, that we put her interim when she announced her resignation. She's been working with Kate to shadow her, to learn all the ins and outs about the CAT program and all of the things that Kate does. We ran those programs, some of the community events, when she was placed on leave. I headed up the pet pictures with sand, and we had record numbers, and we handled that community events, and we've reached out and worked with her continuous to do that. So again, I think things are working well. I haven't had any complaints and from citizens or anything for that matter.
I think that things are working well, and along with Alderman Mossdeller, I was on the ad hoc committee that changed things. For those who don't know, we had a real bad series of the animal mistreatment by the animal control officer, and that is what inspired us to try to make some changes. And the changes have been extraordinary. Kate Marshall has been just the ideal Animal Protective Services officer. We're really going to miss you. The animals are going to miss you. Maybe not the alligators, but...
And let me also, go ahead.
Well, the thing, I'm, I, before I vote on this, if we vote today, is things are working so well. What would change do? Would it improve things? Would it keep things as they're going? Or would it create a problem? I don't know that you can answer that.
I mean, I don't, I don't think we would miss a beat, honestly. I mean, and not, it's all one-sided. Kate has done a great job to help the police officers as well. Some of the things she's helped us with is, I talked to her about helping us with golf cart registrations, because we have a large registration golf cart process. So a citizen can be trained to do that. We had our clerk, Ms. Allison, was doing it for us, and she has helped us do that. She helps us at the summer markets, and also reached out and said you can set up your booth and pass out APS stuff at the summer market as well and do things like that. So she's been a big help to us. She's recently started coming up to the office and helping us answer phones, because I only have one assistant, one, one full-time assistant. And prior to her, we were having to, when Ms. Allison was out sick, when things would happen, or she's on vacation, I was having to have officers come in and for overtime to, to run the front desk. And she's been a big help to help us do that. So it's not all one-sided. I mean, we've worked very, very well as a team to, to get the job done.
Chief, is, the bottom line is, the safety of the person who has this position seems to be the theme of your conversation. So if somebody, if DPW, Public Works, wanted to get into the CAD system, wanted to be able to call through CAD system, that wouldn't happen, correct? Okay, so the CAD system is a product of both the fire department and the police department through 911 system, correct?
It is. I mean, all first responders are built into that.
Correct. So if they're not, if they're not in, under the umbrella of the police department or fire department, they would not be in the CAD system. So then the manager would be the CAD system.
Right.
So the manager would have to know where the person is at all times and be able to manage that as a direct report.
Right.
To me, it's pretty clear that since I've asked this question a half a dozen times, and I realize that it crosses the line, it may cross the line, I'm not saying it does cross the line, it may cross the line into personnel, and that, I don't know how we get around it. What is the degradation of the program since it's been put into the police department? And I don't see any. All of the things that were talked about today can happen through the police department and are not that special in the big world of things that a person of the status that the APS person has, they get paid more than the police officers, do they not?
Yes.
So they're, they're, they get, they're, get paid more than that. There's nothing that I can see that, that would prevent that person from doing all of those things and still be under the police department. That's just my personal...
Can I, can I enter, just answer to that? I think, and, and with the chief, I understand that it's continued to be like it was, but it was built, for five years operated, and that's where the APS department was built in those five years. Sliding the same individual into the police department, doing the same thing they had been doing previously, gives it more skills, more, they're, they're still that department head, they've been slid in, but they're also doing lunch duty, and there are other things that are not like that. The other thing about the safety is...
I'm unable to respond back to you on this issue, because it's a personnel issue.
Well, I'll talk about, stick with the department then.
Okay.
The, so for five years, we had a department head build a department. It's the same department. Now we're losing that department head, and we're gonna, instead of saying, here, we've got an APS department, and we want that next-level department head person to continue that work and grow that work, it's going to be someone in a chain of command, and I appreciate the chief's background in animal welfare, but the supervision and who, subject matter expert is who we're looking for, for the APS department. I don't know how, to me, I don't know how we get that individual without giving, making it into a department head and having them be a direct report like it was.
Let me ask a question here. If, it seems to me the issue is, are you going to have a separate department? Are you going to have them reporting to you? If you have a separate department, all these other things that that person has been doing, will that continue? Or is that something that is just going to drop out?
I mean, it is continued, like I said, under the police department. I know she, they merged APS within the police department. That came with a long discussion, manager Theron and the deputy manager Dory was here at the time, and they, they reached out, and we had discussions, and she mentioned to me that they may put her within the police department, but then they reached out to other agencies and across the state, a lot of places, APS is being put with police officers, it's being put Leland Police, Bowling Springs Lakes Police, Brunswick County Sheriff has the largest arm of APS. So it looked, it was a good fit, and she talked to me, she did ask me about my background and my relevance to APS workings and handling. So that's how that all, she didn't just, I don't want you to think, I mean, they didn't just shove her under us to put her there. I mean, there was some thought process put into that. And as far as subject matter experts, I mean, I'm not an expert in all crimes. I mean, heaven forbid, when we had that fatal motor vehicle crash, I, I reached out to the lieutenant with Highway Patrol, and they sent somebody down to help us with that, a subject matter expert. If we have a crime scene that we need help with, I mean, we reach out. So the same thing with APS, if we have a situation, North Carolina Wildlife is our subject matter expert, our local vets are our subject matter expert, the officer getting training, nothing, nothing will change. We won't have a suited police officer now because Kate has resigned. I won't have a suited police officer, if that's even the case. We have an officer right now that is interim APS, because she has always expressed interest, and she has a passion for animals. She, she mentioned this when Kate was not even under the police department. She's always had a passion for that. So she seemed like a good fit. When Kate announced her resignation, she reached out, so we just wanted her to shadow and absorb as much as we could from Kate while she is still here about all the things that she does. We have opened it up for applications. It closes this week. The last time I checked, we've got like 14 applicants. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're not just gonna wipe this off and just throw somebody in there and keep going. We're gonna, we're gonna vet this, and, and we want a professional department as it's been the whole time. So...
I don't know that there's anything that precludes a subject matter expert from working within a police department, in my opinion. I think that the relationship with Dr. Travis is one that is amazingly valuable for City of Southport, and Dr. Travis has given her time and effort, not only through APS, but also through other volunteer committees in City of Southport, and she has shown over and over again that she wants to step up for the city, and that's amazing. And I can't imagine that that would change based on whether or not there was a separate department or it's within the police department. I have personally gotten phone calls from citizens of Southport who were dealing with alligators, and they couldn't, they were waiting for APS to arrive, and they didn't arrive in a timely manner. So I showed up to try and wrangle the alligator and called the chief, because I was out of my depth trying to do that, and the chief showed up because the alligator hissed at me, and, and I ran away. And we were there for about another hour with the chief holding the alligator before APS showed up. That was a frustrating situation for me, because I had citizens reaching out that were asking for help, and the first person to show up to help was the chief, and that was a phone call that I did not make lightly. But we waited, and APS did show up eventually, but that shows me that our police department is stepping in when we need them to help with this. And that won't just be with alligators, that might be with, sadly, we see the foxes that people don't understand are just part of our ecosystem here, and we see raccoons during the day, and people don't understand that raccoons actually go out during the day sometimes. It doesn't necessarily mean that they are rabid, and we, I'm, living in the ecosystem where we live, we have lots of animals, and that is a 24/7 job. That's not, that's not somebody who can clock in and clock out, and our police department has to step up for that over and over again. So I see why the police department would be a good fit, because they're the ones who get the phone calls and have to step in to help with this. And then, remind me again, chief, the rest of the county, the APS department is now in the police department? Is that, did I understand you correctly?
Yes, ma'am. They either contract with the county APS, or they have it within their police departments. The ones that contract, municipalities certainly can't contract, however, they're within their police departments.
Thank you.
Chief, if this was created as a separate department, there would be no change with our relationship with Dr. Travis. I have a great deal of respect for Dr. Travis. She and her team, I had a mangy cat several years ago, everywhere, nobody could do it, took a Dr. Travis, she healed it. So I have a great deal of respect for what she and her team do. You can't, they're, they're the best there is. I really appreciate all they do.
Yeah, and I, like I said, she's here in the audience. I don't, I don't know that we've had a problem. I mean, we have our facility, our off-site facility for after hour holding, building is on her property. During the recent storm, they lost power to their whole facility, and they were able to plug their whole AP, their whole animal hospital into our power supply, and we ran power for them for several months. I mean, we, that was just a phone call. We didn't, we've not missed a beat. There's a meeting today that I was told before Ms. Marshall resigned, saying that I needed to meet with her about our mutual agreement, and I've reached out to the manager. Now, Ms. Marshall did not give that to me before she resigned, so we're going to talk about that today. Again, it's a meeting that I was told I needed to schedule right away, so I did that. It's at noon today. We're going to talk about that. I, I hope there's nothing wrong that I don't know about, because like I said, Ms. Marshall, and again, she's here in the audience too, that she's not expressed to me that there's an issue. We'll continue to carry animals for care there, if we can, or wherever we need to carry them. I mean, Kate has set that up, and she's told us how she handles that, she's talked to me about it, so I don't, I don't know where we would miss a beat there either, but...
Do I understand that we, we don't know for sure that our more or less tacit agreement with, Dr. Travis is up in the balance, is on, in the balance, or is there any, any danger of that not continuing?
I mean, I hope not. I asked Ms. Marshall that, and she told me no, because I even asked her in our conversation in my office before I went on vacation, when she approached me about it, because I've asked about that mutual agreement before, and nobody could find it. It was said that it was destroyed in the storm. At one point, it was waterlogged at the storm or something, and I know it was brought to my attention back when APS first came under us, but I think we're fine. The, I asked, did we need to prepare to move the building from the site? And Ms. Marshall said no, that everything was fine. I think it's just a formality of writing it up and signing a new one. So we're going to discuss that with the manager, and that'll go through the process. I'm sure it probably, because it is a contract, it'll come back before the board, and y'all will look at that, but I don't, I don't think there's a problem that I know of.
Just a couple of things, and then I want to ask Ms. Marshall a question. With regard to the alligators, the reason they have to wait on APS is APS was certified to do it, otherwise they have to wait on wildlife, which takes hours and hours. So, and historically, it has always been a cooperative relationship between Animal Protective Services and the police department. After hours, all of those things, all of that has always been, and it worked really well. So putting it in the police department did not give something more to safety, except that, because if we thought everything had to be in the police department to be safe, we have building inspectors, we have other code enforcement that walk into people's homes and do things. So I don't, I don't, I appreciate that safety, but it was always safe here in Southport, for the Animal Protective Services Department.
Yeah, it has been. And Ms. Kate has made that comment.
Because the police make it safe. I know that.
She's made that comment. She had a discussion with the lieutenant, because apparently that's been like heavily, for some reason, somebody, I guess in y'all's discussions, y'all talking about it, said, and she mentions, you know, she feels safe a lot of times, and she does. There, there are times where she's come to the office. She came one day and asked me to go with her to a call. She had a...
Right.
A guy that was aggressive, and we went and helped her with that, and, but she does a good job with that. So yeah, but it just, we just, like I said, just married two things together, and I think the safety side of it and all that is knowing and hearing where she's at when they dispatch calls and things like that. I think that's what that is meaning, because anything can turn dangerous in a minute. So Kate just checked out on a call, and we look, and she's been there for two hours, and something's not right. I mean, somebody could, something could have, I think that's the safety side. It's not that she's worried about her safety, because she has, she feels very safe in her job.
Chief, to follow up on something that you said and that Alderman Lay talked about, the industry standard, both here and around the country, is that unless the organization is like from a big city, in which the APS or animal welfare, whatever you want to call it, that, whatever they call it, is standalone when there's lots of them and there's a big organization. Otherwise, it's quite often the standard that it's under the police department, is it not?
Most time, I think so.
Yeah. Okay. Are there other questions of the chief?
But there are communities, I just want to be real clear, there are communities that have a standalone department, and our, and I know that look to Southport, what our model was, and, because our ordinance, one of the things that, when I say a subject matter expert and a department head, our ordinance is 28 pages long, and it is an animal welfare ordinance with non-tethering, all the things that county doesn't, you know, do from that perspective. Bowling Springs has an 18-page ordinance, so they're, they don't have the same conversations in their ordinance. they don't have the same conversations in their ordinance. They're more animal control models. Those are animal control models. Um, so, um, I just wanna, I just wanna put that out there. And the fact that somebody else does something that way, does it mean that we should? And the reason we're as successful as we are is we went a different route seven years ago to create an Animal Protective Services department that became what it is now.
A 28-page document, I'm sorry.
Huh?
I've been in government my whole life. A 28-page document is nothing. It clearly is nothing compared to all the other documents that people have to work with. Uh,
I had to memorize soliloquies that long in high school.
Well, but it's, what I'm saying about that is our ordinance is more robust than everyone else's.
And, and I applaud Southport for doing that. I'm not belittling the document, but what I'm saying is the amount of subject matter expertise for a 28-page document is what a sergeant does.
Well, but-
And easily does, uh, with his hand or his or her hands tied behind their back. The manuals that the fire department and the police department have to work under are vastly bigger than that. This is not a department head position. It's just simply in the world that we live in and you're giving another job to the manager to manage this position directly and we're having, we have, instead of doing that, we should really be looking, if they're gonna reorganize, because that, that thing you're hanging your hat on, we're doing a reorganization of the, of the, of the city. If you want to do a reorganization of the city, let's look at the whole city and see, see what we need to condense. But one person, one position where no one can tell me that it's been segregated based on the current position where it's, where it's housed, I don't see the, I don't see the need to change that to make a one-person department.
Oh, I appreciate your opinion. Can I, um, Ms. Marshall, are you comfortable coming up? Okay. Um, just, just because I, I, I just would like to maybe get your insight since you are the subject matter expert we've been talking about. Uh, with regard to just a 28, before you speak though, uh, with regard to a 28-page document, it's all the other things. It's the building relationships with state and local entities. It's other certifications. It's, uh, community events. It's writing ordinance, having the ability to write ordinance, not just follow ordinance. So when you reduce it down to saying, oh, well, it's just this, it's not just this. It's this to, for it to be all of it.
I think then that's just part of the job description. I mean, that, we just write that into the job description. It doesn't need to be a whole department in order for someone to write ordinance. We have people who suggest ordinance for each department that are not department heads also.
Let me ask you a question.
And certainly citizens who suggest ordinance as well.
When and where, or when and for what reason did we move it from a separate department into the police department? What was the rationale to do that?
That, sir, I think will-
No, I can, I can tell you. What was said in an email was that, that it was to streamline. That's, that was the, it wasn't to improve it. It wasn't to do anything. I have the email that was sent to the board of Alderman that said that. So there was no, there was no reasoning as far as it'll improve this or it'll do that. And so that's the answer to that. And Ms. Marshall?
I was never involved in any conversation of that at all. I was told after a staff meeting that starting tomorrow, I'd be reporting to Chief Coring. And that was, I was never and have never been involved in any discussion about the department and that decision.
The reason I, I asked you to come up was to talk about the development of it for the first five years and then maybe if you see benefits of being a separate department versus being in the police department.
Well, animal welfare in the last 10 years has moving towards a separate department away from policing. It's, it's throughout United States. It's throughout North Carolina. Elizabeth City just reached out to me. They spent a year moving the Animal Protective Services from the Sheriff's Department into Animal Services. So they hired someone to do that. They reached out to us about the ordinance. They reached out to me about SOPs and things throughout. Uh, I have actually spoke at conferences about how we were able to get community in, input and trust in Community CAT program, which generally is what is not included in other ordinances. So we were ahead of the game in, in creating this and allowing it to be not a policing area. Um, it's, it's, I have not been able to, um, receive a grant since I've been under the police department. I had grants, um, for the last several years to do vaccination clinics, free vaccination clinics. And that has not been able to do it because now I'm in a larger pie. So those organizations that, that I go to for that, Pet Co. Love, they, they don't, they won't, um, issue it. So that has been a detriment.
What is their logic for not issuing those things? What, what changed?
It was simply the, the budget model. So a smaller department with less to work with to provide a service to the city, now I'm in a larger, um, budget pool. So there is more resources there that we could purchase those on our own. It's, it's a model that they have. Ms. Kelly, I apologize for not showing up for the alligator. That was during PTC eight. So I had just driven all the way through the flood home and had to turn around and come all the way back. So, and I had reached out to Wildlife and they said to simply leave the alligator alone. So there, it, it is, it is difficult, um, to try to do things, especially off, um, off-duty. So I'm on call every other weekend, but my phone is on 24/7 and I answered the phone 24/7, so.
Are there any other questions for Kate?
Well, are there, are there reasons? Do you have any reasons, um, the difference between being in the chain of command of the police department versus being a separate department? Uh, were there benefits of being in the police department or benefits of being a separate entity?
So I think I have a unique perspective in this as, um, when I was in North Ridgeville, Ohio, I served as a sworn police officer. I was the first female to ever be hired, uh, to work up in the field, carry a weapon. So I was their humane agent and I worked under the police department chain of command. Um, there were restrictions there. Uh, you had to basically, whatever your feelings were about how animals should be treated was basically steered by your chain of command. And in one instance, it was, it was a great working relationship and then the next person comes in and they don't have that same, um, uh, perspective. So things can change in how animals are treated. What I feel is important that nobody talks about is these are life and death decisions. It's not a, a person life and death decisions, but these are still animal. North Carolina, uh, Welfare Act, there's certain ways animals need to be treated humanely if they're sick or injured. Those decisions need to be made on the spot. Um, if an animal's taken that's sick or injured to the, uh, the veterinarian, it's not the veterinarian's call. They can guide me and, and, uh, how things should be done. They're not gonna tell me, yes, this animal you, needs to be euthanized. No, it doesn't. You have to have your animal sheltering experience to know what your budget can sustain. Is this animal worth saving? It's, it's a very difficult thing to think about, but you've got limited resources and you have to think about your budget year, how many others you can help. So those decisions need to be made. And to have to stop and call up a chain of command, hey, can I do this? Hey, can I not? I, I feel is, is hindering. So in my role, please, uh, the chief Coring is, has let me run the department. It's basically what I've done. I've run the department and made those decisions on my own without going up the chain of command. So that's what I think the next person coming in does not have that expertise or does not have that confidence to call someone and say, what should I do? I, I don't know. They're not gonna leave it up to the vet. It's not their decision. It's our decision. So to me, those decisions that need to be made right away is a department head decision. What my budget is, what I need to do, that's, that's something that comes from experience and the confidence to know that that decision is right. Because unfortunately, if it's someone's pet that you were not able to identify the owner and then that animal is euthanized, you've got to be able to stand in behind your decisions, which could end up in a legal issue or other issues. So that to me is enough to make it a department head decision.
At this point in time, you are an autonomous person under the auspices of the police department. So you make the decisions, whether you have to use any of those decisions. You still aren't autonomous. You, you make the decisions. So what does it matter if you are just within the police department or out there as a separate organization? You're still an autonomous group where you are. You make the decisions. You make the calls, correct?
That's only because how the model stands now. In a true chain of command, I should not be making those decisions. In a true chain of command, as, as when I was in the police department, I had to call my supervisor to go over the situation and discuss it to see if this is what should be done. It was never left up to me. In this instance, I've been running the department and making those decisions. So for me, why do I need to be under a, a police chief in that chain of command?
It sounds like we just need to add that to the job description. So that, that is the way forward rather than having to create a whole different department for it.
We had the department before. Um, the programs that you mentioned as it relates to, um, the grants, did we continue those programs without the grants?
No, we did not. There was one separate instance with, uh, Southport Greens that I used our budget and purchased a limited number. There was 10 animals that needed to be vaccinated so they could remain in their homes. So I purchased a separate limited amount of vaccines for that, but I've never been able to do another, um, community-wide vaccination clinic.
This might be, um, an ignorant question. I don't have a pet right now, so I am, uh, bear with me. Um, I have had pets in the past. I have had to euthanize a pet in the past. Um, I understand that vaccinations are expensive. I understand that veterinary visits are expensive. I understand that the emergency animal hospital in Wilmington is very, very expensive. I got to experience all of that. Um, are citizens of Southport not responsible pet owners that understand that when they purchase a pet and bring it home, that they, that there are, there's money involved in that?
Yes, they are aware of that and that's part of the ordinance, the responsible pet ownership. An animal that's injured, that they're not aware got out and got injured, that's, that becomes our responsibility, that we have to care for that animal until it's treated or in the vaccinations. This is another trying in the big picture, limited intake to the county. We, we are all-inclusive. Everything that happens in the city, we're responsible for. We do take animals to the county if it's long-term holding. Um, but managed intake, we're trying now in the animal welfare field is to keep animals in their homes. So whatever you can do, build a fence, get a vaccination to help the community to keep the animals in their homes, that's a voucher program. That's something that we can extend to citizens that can't afford it. So in those instances, those citizens couldn't afford it. They didn't have transportation to get to the county to do their vaccinations or to get to a veterinarian. So we stepped in and provided that. That's one of the services and one of the things that's great about this community is we're able to provide that. And that was a decision that I made that, because we've always done that, vaccination clinics and, uh, trying to help people. If there's someone that can't drive their pet to the vet, I would take them. If they needed help with vet bills in a limited intake, because you know what your budget is, there's certain things you can provide, like a, uh, uh, an appointment to get a diagnosis. And then you can reach them over to the nonprofits, then can take over the actual, uh, cost of the care. But they need that initial exam and initial diagnosis in order to reach that. And that's the part they couldn't afford.
So if somebody's dog runs out, gets hit by a car, we don't know whose dog it is, it potentially gets taken to Dr. Travis's office in the short term for treatment until we figure out whose dog it is. At that point, the city has paid for services, overnight care. Do we then ask the pet owner when we find them to reimburse the city for that?
We can, yes. If they're not able to, then what, the only other alternative is to impound the animal and take it from them. So we don't do that here.
Have, have we asked for reimbursement and gotten it?
That situation's never come up. It's usually been, um, stray animals or owners that never came forward. And sometimes it was because they were afraid that they couldn't pay for it. They wouldn't get the pet vet back, but that, they didn't reach out. So, so far that's, that's not happened. It's the animals have been, and then they've taken care or reimbursed us.
How is that change?
Hang on, I'm sorry. So we have had reimbursement from the owners. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you said we hadn't had that come up yet.
There was, uh, one instance, there was a cat and yes, that was reimbursed. Okay, thank you.
Noah, um, oh, um, so it sounds like this, the function, the, the hardest part of this to swallow perhaps for the board is the impact it would have on you. And so do you feel like you would be able to manage effectively, uh, a department head for this department?
Yeah, I think I could. The way I envision it is if it moves on its own, there would be no change in what the police will continue to do in support of them. So I don't think I would necessarily have to be on a radio to support them in that way. It would just be, the functions would stay the same as they have been as we look for even more improvements, but the function with the police would continue. The only thing that would really change is they would report to me instead of the police chief.
I'm having a hard time with the fact that City of Southport's paying for other people's vet bills.
We pay. So that we can, we can, I, I, I had the same thought, but we can talk about that some other time. The really issue here is that I'm, I'm trying to figure out the responsibility of this position. And I'm putting it against a homicide detective. Doesn't even come close. We don't make them single departments. They, there's lots of people that do lots of important things and they don't have to be a department head to do that in all organizations. It's just not structurally sound to do it. Um, the, the, all of those things are great things. Southport is, has taken the lead in that. However, with that said, it is simply not sound government to have a single department head because of the list of things that you've listed so far. That easily fits under the, 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 the structure that a police department can have. And if, if you were in a, the police department, that you had to ask permission to do everything, that is a bad organization. Simply a bad organization.
There, there is a-
That's simply not, and we don't have that in Southport. And if we do have that in Southport, then we have to look for somebody else to be running a program because it should not be that every time I have to do something, I have to ask permission. You, you were put under the police department and you, you didn't have that restriction. You were able to work the way you did before. The biggest issue that we had is they had the safety issue. You were in the CAD system. Everybody knew where you were. They could track you. If you got on the phone and started to yell for help, they would know exactly where you were. All of that took place. The position is important. I want to make sure that I'm not minimizing the position. I'm just saying, compared to all other types of jobs that are out there, they're not all standalone departments just because you have some responsibility and you can make decisions at, at the level that you are because you're, you're actually at a higher level than the police officers are because you get paid more than that. We, we, we categorize that position to be above them because we pay you more. That's how we, how you, how you can look at it. So I'm, I'm just not sure. I've seen the degradation of the process and why we have to reorganize the, the organization for this one position. But again, I'm only one person speaking about this. And at some point, we probably should come to a vote.
I would like to, um, I would like to... I don't understand the negative about it being a standalone. I see a negative about you being under... Just the grants alone, we're providing fewer services now than we were able to before, or than we did. And we're using Southport's money when we could be using grant money. So I think fiscal responsibility would tell us that it would be not... I mean, we want to certainly provide those services, but we also want, you know, to have money coming in from another source to do that. So what is the negative about it being a standalone, other than we're going to be getting money that we didn't?
I can't answer your question. Do we know we're not going to be getting money that we didn't? I guess I'm having... That's one of the things I'm struggling with now. How did that money go away since it moved into a different department? The money's still there. We still make the application. Why can't we get it?
Mr. May, can I speak? Excuse me, sir. Again, I'm very surprised by this discussion. This is more she's told y'all than she's told me, as the chief. We've had budget discussions, and I've asked you about that before, and you've not said anything about the budget affecting your ability to get grants. When I talked to the county before I left on vacation, just to sum up some things about the mutual agreement that we have with them and the county, they offered assistance to do rabies clinics. The county has money. We are in Brunswick County. And we've talked before about teaming up and doing events with them, and you've not done that. So... But we are not going to lose money. We can still get those rabies clinics and set them up right here in Southport. So this is the first I've heard about that. I apologize if you haven't told me that, or we could have looked at that and addressed that. But again, this is more information than I have been privy to, so.
I'd like to make a motion to move to the previous question. I'd like to make a motion to move to the previous question.
I didn't hear the motion.
The motion's to move to the previous question to call the vote.
Okay, there's a motion to call the vote. There's a second to that motion. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, then...
Yes.
No, it's non-debatable. I'm sorry. I apologize. Could you turn off your mic for a moment? And so there's a motion on the floor. There's a second to the motion.
Can we go back over what the motion was?
Let's repeat the motion so we actually know what we're doing. Could you repeat your motion, ma'am?
Say, well, you've got to deal with Rebecca's motion first. Her motion is to order the previous question, which will immediately take us to the vote on Karen's motion with no other discussion.
All right. So on the Mayor Pro Tem's motion, please say aye.
My motion is to force a vote.
To force a vote.
No further discussion.
Correct. Until we get to the second vote, which will be the vote on the motion on that.
We're ending discussion.
We're ending discussion. We're having a vote to see if we're going to vote. So let's... Do you understand what the question is, ma'am? Okay.
We do this, so I can...
So there's a motion on the floor for...
Move to the previous question.
Move to the previous question. There's a second to that. So now we're at a vote for that. And that will make us... If we vote in favor of that, we move to the vote on the original motion. So all in favor of the motion by the Mayor Pro Tem, please say aye and raise your hand so I can see the votes. All oppose? I vote with the move to the vote. The next vote is... Yes, really. We're going to need to... We need to come to a good decision, one way or the other. We didn't vote not to do it yet.
We need more information. That's my problem.
Well, unfortunately, the vote was against that. So now, we had a motion on the floor and a second to the motion to poll... If you want to restate your motion as you wish to say it, so I don't misstate it, ma'am.
The motion is to reinstate our Animal Protective Services Department as a standalone department, reporting directly to the city manager with the APS officer serving as the department head.
And there was a second to that, so... All in favor of that motion, please say aye and raise your hand. All opposed to that, please raise your hand. It's four to two. I'm going to take a 10-minute recess, please.
Like to bring the meeting back into order. The next agenda item is event ordinance and process improvement. Elena, you're up ma'am.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here today to present an event ordinance that would establish a formal process and permit for events that impact the normal flow in Southport. This effort has been driven by feedback from our downtown businesses at the roundtables Noah's been hosting, nonprofit partners, and our own city departments. What we've heard repeatedly is that the current event process lacks clarity. Businesses often feel out of the loop and nonprofits or community groups looking to host events don't always know where to begin or who to go to for the right information. This ordinance is designed to address that, aiming to bring consistency and better communication for everyone involved. A key component is that the Community Relations Department would serve as the central point of contact. We would then coordinate with city staff and organizers to ensure each event is reviewed based on safety, logistics, and city resources. It's important to note that the permit process comes with only one new added fee, a $100 application fee, which would be waived for city events sponsored by the city. All other potential costs like police support, barricades, street closures, or use of public space already outlined in our existing fee schedule and would vary based on the event's size and scope. I also wanted to take a moment and clarify what this ordinance would not mean. It would not mean that a member of my staff would be able to be present at every event, and it does not guarantee use of city buildings, parks, or streets just because a request was submitted. All requests would be reviewed and approved as appropriate by individual department heads. At the end of the day, this ordinance is aimed at transparency, structure, and making sure we're all on the same page. I wanted to take a brief moment away from the notes I prepared and just address Mr. Jason's concerns that he brought up during public comment. His concerns are similar concerns to some that I've heard from many of the business owners in the downtown area. So one of the things outlined in this plan is lettering local businesses and houses to let them know about street closures and also define what that area looks like. Because some events do on their own right now, letter when they're closing a street, but there's no set parameter or diameter for where that lettering should occur. So I've written it in the event footprint and then one block outward. So that means that if Bay Street was being closed, even though the businesses on Moore Street are not on Bay Street, they're still within that one block radius and would be lettered as well. And so hopefully that will aim towards solving some of those concerns he did bring up today.
Will homeowners in that same area be lettered also?
Yep, so homeowners are written as part of the lettering radius.
Did we have any conversation with the owners or the business owners when we were putting this together?
So when I put this together, I took a lot of the feedback that we've gotten from the business roundtables that Noah has been hosting.
Have you considered a roundtable for residents? Because there is a resident on South Davis Street who never gets notified that all of a sudden there's going to be a line of porta potties in front of her house, which is about, means that they're, of course, they open not toward the street but towards her house. And so they are about 10 feet from her front porch, meaning that she can't really sit on her porch and enjoy anything. And they, they never got a, and never got anything, but you know what? They do get notification from the movie people.
Exactly. So the lettering structure that I've outlined in this ordinance is similar to the lettering outline in the film permit, which is also a permit that I have a hand in. So that's where I drew that idea from. No, I haven't, to, to back it up to the start of your question. No, we haven't had a roundtable discussion with individuals. But to then go into the particular instance you described, I can say that any city event that we have put on, we have not put porta potties on Davis Street. We have on the Garrison lawn, but not on Davis Street itself. And so the event that you're talking about is likely an outside entity. And so this would require them then to letter those homes. This would require them to let them know that that would be happening. So right this second, we have no structure in place for those types of requirements, and that's what I'm aiming to do.
The, the ideal result was they just didn't have any of that at all. Across from the real estate office was a booth selling aluminum siding, which was a little unique considering this was part of Fourth of July. But the, the, the street became a marketplace.
Yes.
And meaning that there was no business conducted there.
So again, I can say, at least with this ordinance in place, those businesses would have been notified well in advance of that happening because it would be required by the ordinance. Right? The second there is no requirement.
Well, there's a difference between notification and prevention.
I'm going to say this, just because I help work with the Fourth of July. We struggled this year to determine booth placement because of the reasonings just like that. Losing Franklin Square Park as an event area meant that Bay Street and Davis Street became the marketplace. So where the festival chooses to place vendors on that street is dictated by the festival. So that is one of the things that is not included in this ordinance. This ordinance was not meant for me to tell individual nonprofits what they can and can't do within what we're allowing as the city. This is the first step that they would take. So the Fourth of July would apply and say, may we use Bay Street? May we use South Davis Street? And then the department heads would then get together and make that determination. Yes, you may use Bay Street. Yes, you may use South Davis Street.
And Alderman Davis, the Fourth of July festival this year, when we went through that, that was a big discussion about where to place vendors, where they would be least impactful on the residents and the businesses along, along the areas where the streets were closed. And I think that the residents and businesses were actually kept very much in mind when they were trying to figure out the placement. And I think personally, I, if I ever have the opportunity to live along Bay or Davis Streets, which I hope will be in my future at some point, I would be glad that the food vendors weren't right in front of my home. I wouldn't love the porta potties in front of my home. But having a nonprofit selling something would be preferable to me to have there over some of the other options.
I, I have a couple of questions. One, as we learned about getting input about the fees and things for the community building when we made those changes. Have you met or gotten input from some of the different groups like the boat show, the car show, the Baptist Church holiday, Southport Arts Mania, the Southport Unity Group, of course, Fourth of July, and Memorial Day, like with Johnny and Smith, included them in this conversation?
So I can't say that all of the groups that you have just named were included in the conversation. But I can tell you that some of them have been. I've just approached them casually, asked how they felt. And I'm going to say that most of them replied with the fact that anything to make this a little more structured is better than what we currently have in place. I am sure that with the first year of this, we're going to have things that I may have to come back to you and say, we didn't add this and this came up, so we need to add it now. Or this isn't working the way that I anticipated it to. But I do know that events in town are asking for that structure because right this second, they feel in the dark about what the processes should be.
Yeah, but just things like where it says a similages of 500 people or more. Is that 500 at one time or 500 over the course of a, you know?
Yep, expected attendance. So if you anticipate hitting 500 people, which would include your vendors. So if you have 100 vendors, then that's 400 guests. Yes. And I will say that me and the city manager did go back and forth about what that particular number should be. Because we, we, we don't want to make an event here at the community building like with 160 yeses included in this event ordinance. We don't want weddings around town to be included in this event ordinance. This is supposed to be for large-scale events, anticipated to close roads, close sidewalks, that sort of thing.
So I, I had, I was wondering, and when you've got step one is the inquiry and step two, it says you want the certificate of insurance in the step two, but you, you're, you've not given them approval. So they would not, would they have a certificate of insurance that early? Because that's a purchase thing, isn't it?
Usually our local nonprofits carry their insurance throughout the whole year because they have more than one event a year. If they don't and they need it for the one-time event, our event platform, Eventony, offers that event insurance. And actually, I had a question this morning about for a one-day event, how much might that cost? And there is some varying costs associated depending on what they choose to have included. But for a million-dollar policy, depending on the size, scope of your event, you're looking at about $54 to $100 if you choose to purchase it through Eventony, if you don't carry that insurance all year long.
So then they, you would wait to approve them, and then they get the insurance?
Yeah. If they don't carry it all year. If they carry it all year, they can upload it and we're done.
Sure, sure. Wait a minute, I just had a few other questions. On the, where you're talking about fire and safety plan, it says, or large structures. Is this like the big tent for, that was on the Garrison for those kind of structures, but not like festival, you know, the little canopy things, the eight by 10, or 10 by 10, or whatever?
So the answer to your question is yes, both, but only the small tents in certain instances, and that's determined by the Fire Marshal's Office. I may be speaking incorrectly, but I believe if it's within 20 feet of a building, is that right, 20 feet? 20 feet of a building, then even the smallest of tents need to still be permitted. But if they're not in that proximity to a building, then they don't have to.
And they can have access to that information?
Yeah.
That information's somehow accessible?
Exactly.
I believe one of the reasons that, Heather, you can correct me if I'm wrong, please, that the farmer's market moved from the Garrison lawn was, you know, this is a historic piece of land. And under the state Historic Preservation Office rules, you can't drive tent stakes into the, into the ground. So you have to have another means of stabilizing your tent. Is that correct?
So part of the reason, and then the other half of that reason, from my understanding, was just the level of impact that it had on the lawn. The fact that it was happening so regularly, it was compacting the dirt. And for archaeological reasons, they didn't want us to do that anymore. But just to speak on staking real quick, just for the record, you are not allowed to stake in any of our parks, period. That is part of our permitting done by Parks and Recreation.
On the, it says insurance requirement, naming city of Southport. Has that always been like that?
No, this would be a new requirement.
This is a new requirement? I wonder if it'll affect costs or any of that?
It shouldn't. It should be like any other insurance policy where you just draft the policy through your insurance company and they just line item us as an additional assured, they send us the copy, and that's the end of that. The Fourth of July does normally do that for us. And that I'm aware, it doesn't affect cost, it's just part of the policy.
Oak Island does that already.
Are, are you talking about, I think, the notifications for the street closures and all of that? Are you going to have some kind of form?
Yes.
That they're going to be able to know that it's, that it's right information's getting distributed, however you think it should be?
So my plan for that is to have a checklist. And I will physically be drawing a map for each individual event. It'll take a lot of time, year one. Generally speaking, events happen in the same place over and over. So once I've done it once, they can use it year after year. To outline the boundaries of where that lettering has to occur, I'll send them a suggested letter. I'll send them a checklist that they then turn back over to me to prove that that occurred. And in some cases, there may not be a business owner available or a homeowner available. So as long as a volunteer signs off that they certify that they left the message, we will accept it.
Gotcha. And then under, on the next page, it says, organizers must provide adequate restrooms and waste disposal, you know? How, how do you determine that?
Yeah, so with the help of Public Works. So talking about bringing in these different department heads for individualized events. If, let's say, I don't want to use a particular event because I don't want anybody to feel like they're being picked on. So I'll pick on myself. Let's say the food truck rodeo this past weekend that my department put on. We used our own trash receptacles, we used the local restrooms already provided. If Tom Stanley told me next year that that was a major strain on his department, then we would then be notified and plan for the following year to bring in porta potties and to purchase more trash receptacles.
Okay, cool. And then it says first aid stations and emergency access routes and all of that. What, what's the definition of a first aid station? What, are, are you going to have some kind of standards that they have to have for a first aid station?
That'll be entirely talked about with the fire department. The fire department will let me know if they feel like it's a big enough event that they need to be on staff specifically. If not, it'll be that at their information center, wherever that is, that they have a first aid kit onsite.
That's it for me, thanks.
First aid kit or EMS person?
Entirely up to the fire department, what the fire department tells me for that particular event. So that's the beauty of this, is that each event will get, when they submit this permit, I will then spend time, and it'll take me some time, going to each department head and coming up with a packet for that event specifically. And then I'll deliver that to the event organizers. And I'll say, these are the things you need to do, step one through 10, for your particular event. And so far, that's the only way I can see this working well because our events are so different from one another. But it'll provide clarity in the fact that they'll, instead of going to multiple different department heads, I'll do that and then provide them the packet that says, this is what you need to do.
Going back to what I just said, first aid kit or if somebody who is trained, if you have just a kit there, you're going to have to have somebody that has knowledge of what to do with it. If you've got somebody onsite that is already trained, then you don't have that. I can see a big lag time if something happened, you have somebody that's just trying to use the first aid. Maybe it's just a bandage or something, I can understand that. But anything else, I have a problem with it without having somebody who's trained and knows how to handle the situation.
Well, can I speak to that for just a moment? I have a hotel. I don't have EMS personnel stationed at the hotel. I have a first aid kit. And if we need EMS, we call them. It's a significant cost to have EMS sitting at an event when we're already adding $100 application fee. We have EMS in Southport already. We are not reliant on the county EMS. So we have the quickest EMS response time that is available. So I think that that would be asking a lot of a 500-person event to provide EMS on property.
And I'll say this too, once again, I'll pick on my event that we had just this past weekend. Our information area, our home base was the visitor center for that particular event. We have a first aid kit within the visitor center. That's for all the time because we have guests coming in and out. And so that is how we were in compliance this past weekend with our own ordinance we're trying to put into.
Okay, Ashley, where are you coming from?
And then with that, if, if the police or the fire chief doesn't deem it necessary to have EMS staff onsite there for an event, then the event organizer has an option to go through the ODM
Yes.
process to then pay for standby EMS as well to have an extra layer.
Question answered, thank you.
A reminder to the board that it's our policy not to adopt a new, a new ordinance without first having a public hearing. And so while I'm certainly inclined to vote for this today, we need to hear from the public if they have anything to say. And that might bring forth some of the residents, an opportunity for them, or it might not. But we, we still have time to do public notice for the next meeting on Thursday night, next Thursday night, right?
Yeah, I mean, a general ordinance doesn't require a technical public hearing, but we can certainly, if the board wants to delay, advertise it out, make sure folks are aware and then they have that opportunity in public comment to give us that feedback.
I have a question for you, ma'am. So it says here, the, the people putting on the event have to do a site plan and route map and a traffic control and a safety plan. Is it your vision that most people won't be able to understand what that means? And does the city would, would help them construct that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Especially year one. Like I said, most events, once year one is passed by, it'll be status quo year after year. It would only have to be revisited if anything changed. But certainly in this first adoption year, we would help these things together and really look at it with them to make sure that, one, they're in compliance, but two, they have what they need.
Having worked with you and your staff in the past, I feel fully confident that we would do that. I just want to make sure that people don't think that they're going to look at this and go, I can't have an event because I can't figure out how to do that. We are, in fact, public servants. And our job here is to make things happen for you, if you're asking for something that's reasonable. There is one omission from this plan that I truly hope that the city considers adding to this. And that is a weather plan in which somebody from the city has the authority to close the project down if the weather turns bad. Having been through that before, where the event coordinator was making money and they didn't want to close the event down, even though we could see lightning bolts flying around, we have to have some kind of plan. It doesn't happen often, but if it happens, somebody has to be designated that says they're working that day and they're, they're the one who's in charge of saying that it's within a mile. Whatever, whatever we put into the plan, you're going to close it down. Otherwise, on game day, it turns into a heated animated discussion.
The only, and the only other thing I would ask is that I think sometimes there's confusion about fees for barricades, for the fire fees, whatever. If you can come up with some sheets that coalesce them for different organizations, because there's a lot of confusion about that today and I, and probably some inconsistency in the administration of it because of the confusion. So if you could make some individual sheets rather than just our general miscellaneous fee sheet would be helpful, I think.
I fully agree with you.
The lettering, I think it's great that there's a map of where, who needs to be lettering. Is the city actually doing the lettering on behalf of the event? We have to trust that the event is doing the lettering and a signature says that they did it?
Correct. Now for, of course, city events, anything done by my office or that sort of thing, a city staff member would be the one in charge of doing that. But yes, for individual events, it would be up to the event themselves to make sure that lettering occurred and to physically sign off that it occurred for each address.
Is there an option or a way, and I know we've talked about this, for the businesses, being able to notify the businesses via text message or email? And I know it's been difficult to get those from some of the businesses. But I think that if they understand that there's potential for notification this way as well, they might be they might be more apt to give us that contact information. Is that something that we can pursue as well?
So, the public information office does send out road closure information through TextMyGov. And I can certainly say that at the business roundtable meetings, I will be better at reminding them to sign up for those notifications. That way, it doesn't matter where they are in the city, they'll get the notification.
I think, I think it's another step than that. I don't think it's a TextMyGov notification because I shut those off, quite frankly. I need something that, if there's something that's going to affect my business, I need someone to text message me that so I know it.
Yeah, absolutely. And through the roundtables, we've collected a lot of information and data. So, I think it's easy for us to get that list of emails and texts to then push that out for events specifically to those individuals that don't want the regular TextMyGov. And I think we can have that procedure in place for residents as well for event specifics.
They have to still confirm. So, one of the issues we may run into, we may not, but just for full clarity sake, is because we are a government entity, if we send out mass messages, period, they still need to opt in in some way, which is why TextMyGov is excellent. And I, I hope the businesses are open to that. But whatever city manager comes up with, I will be happy to abide by.
Okay. Any other questions? At that point, I have to see what the, the flavor of the board is on this topic. Is there a motion to move forward today? Is there a motion to move forward with a public hearing on Thursday, the 14th, I believe it is, 14th of August, and then decide after that?
I move to have a, move this to a public hearing and discussion and decision perhaps on the 14th of August.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor of the motion, please say aye and raise your hand. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Next is the, the welcome signs to the city. Ma'am, you're up again.
Yeah, so about this particular project, I don't have too terribly much to say other than that NC DOT reached out to us and told us that some of our welcome to signs are dilapidated and in need of replacement. And so, they've really left the ball in our court. Each sign is $2,500. That is the replacement of the sign, the labor to put it in, the printed, the sign itself. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, it's a all-in-one package for $2,500 per sign. We have four signs. Two of them are recommended for sure for immediate replacement. And then we have the option, of course, of replacing all four at once so they have the same lifespan moving forward.
Are all of them dilapidated and in need of replace?
They're all in rough shape. There are two that NC DOT says, you're either going to replace them or we're just going to take them down because they're in such bad shape. But they're all dilapidated.
That includes the riders, the Quinton McCracken, home of 4th of July, the rider.
Yep. So, what it would say would be, welcome to Southport, home of Salubrious Breezes, location of the NC 4th of July festival since 1795.
Can we please take off the Salubrious Breezes? It has a sexual connotation.
What? How did I miss out on this?
Whatever the pleasure of the board.
Well, let's, let's break this down. For the first question, the first question I have for the manager, if we were to do it, it says $10,000. Do we have $10,000?
We do, yes. We have capital money available for this, so we'd be good at that, for that, that number.
Okay. So, I would entertain a motion and please, I would just entertain a motion to, to do something, whatever the board wishes to do.
I wish to replace the, the signs with what is currently there, not with Salubrious Breezes.
So, we have the one Quinton McCracken, 4th of July Festival at the top of one, 4th of July Festival Bird Sanctuary, 4th of July Festival, and then plane. So, you can approve them all as they currently are with the exception of Salubrious Breezes, if that's your desire.
Salubrious Breezes is nowhere on there right now, correct?
It is our tagline, so that's why it was suggested that we include it.
So, yeah, currently, there's not one with Salubrious Breezes.
And it was also in anticipation of making them all uniform.
So, your motion would have to be more explicit, ma'am.
So, that's a problem. Can I, can I, can we ask the question before we, if we're going, if we're... So, are you replacing, it said the city seal, both with this logo. So, are you replacing the state flag with the city seal?
Yes, that, that would also be part of the update, is that the city seal would then be on our welcome signs.
Okay. And then you would be putting, instead of 4th of July Festival, it would say, location of the North Carolina 4th of July Festival since 7. That's a lot to put on a sign.
Yes, but it is approved.
Okay.
Aren't those on riders? They're on riders, separate signs.
Oh, it's, oh, it's...
On this one, actually, so currently, it's on riders. This one, it would be on the actual sign. It would be one flush piece.
Well, this one has, the one coming in on Howe already has it on the sign itself.
But it, but it doesn't say, location of the North Carolina 4th of, you know what I'm saying? It says 4th of July Festival is all it says.
So, these signs would just be bigger?
They'd be a little bigger.
Yeah, okay.
And there, there is a rider on the one coming in on Howe Street that says, home of Quinton McCracken. Would that be?
We could keep the riders that we currently have. We would be replacing the welcome to sign, unless we want them to take them down, which is also an option. We've got a lot of options.
I, I think that when we honor someone who is from here on a sign, I think that needs to stay. I don't know. I think Bird Sanctuary is great, but I don't know that, are we still a bird sanctuary? Are we?
Yeah. It's in our ordinance, our animal, it's in our animal welfare ordinance.
I haven't read the 28 pages and memorized them just yet.
We could also say, home, welcome to Southport, a tree city, USA.
Will they all?
They're all four dilapidated. Two are so dilapidated that the choice is replace them or remove them. But all four are dilapidated.
Is the one on Howe Street?
That's one of the ones that we could keep. If we pick two and not four, that's one of the ones that will stay.
Well, then why don't we do two now and two later because there's a significant cost that goes along with this? And if we set up what it's going to look like, then we know what, when it's time to replace the other two, what those are going to look like.
Question, ma'am?
Yes, that is my motion, but we need to figure out what they're, what's going to, what is going to be on the signs.
Wait, you've, you've made the motion that you, on your motion, you're removing Salubrious Breezes.
Yes, I would like to remove Salubrious Breezes.
You're making a motion that we're only going to replace two of them?
Yes, and replace two of the four, the, the two that are the most dilapidated. And then perhaps we look next year, replacing the other two unless there's some sort of cost savings for replacing all four at the same time.
I don't believe that there is, I was just told, a flat rate of $2,500 per sign.
I know Quinton McCracken, but I, the vast majority of people on earth know who he is. I know we're honoring him and I completely agree with that.
Which are the two that are the fallen down ones, apparently?
No, I don't have the full email in front of me. Do you see?
It should be north, it should be number four, which is NC 211, and then probably number two on East Leonard.
I'll agree with that. Do we know when they're going to rip them down?
They've been, they've been waiting on us at this point. Just a little backstory for, this project came on when Ms. Bonnie was still here. And then it was kind of tabled during the previous city manager's time here. And Noah and I are, have since picked it up, brought it to the forefront and got, got it going. So, it, it's been a considerable amount of time and they've been waiting on us.
Can we auction the current ones or sell tickets for people to possibly win them to help offset the cost of the other signs?
Yeah, I think that would be, we could do that. I mean, it's surplus property, so it's going to be, once it's taken down, that we could retain them to figure out how to do that. But I think that's definitely a possibility.
Somebody's going to put that in their yard.
Okay, so my motion is that we replace the two signs that need to be replaced. We remove Salubrious Breezes and we figure out exactly what we want on the sign soon.
Home of the North Carolina 4th of July Festival with the city seal.
I like that. Let's do that.
Is there a second to that motion? I'm sorry, there's, there's a second. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Elena.
Thank you, guys.
So, moving right along, it's the manager's report.
Thank you. So, just a few updates. So, the ongoing license plate project, we've received so far 110 pre-applications of our 500 that are needed. So, those have come from all over the state and out of the state. So, that anybody still interested in getting a pre-application for theirs can drop by City Hall or get an application on the city website and also reach out to Public Information Officer Shyne Ketchum to get their applications in. So, we're very hopeful that we'll reach that 500 goal quickly. On our efforts to continue to maintain our stormwater system and make improvements to that, beginning today through this week, Public Works will be in the area of Fodell Avenue, Cape Harbor Drive and Memory Lane to begin the cleanup of those stormwater ditches in the stormwater system there to hopefully help that area stormwater flow better. Congratulations to Elena and her team and the other departments that were involved. And the food truck rodeo this past Saturday was a great success that saw many an area and visitors come out to be a part of that. The board, I've put an active capital projects update list at your place so that gives us an update on where all of our large capital projects are and what the next steps are and where we're going with those. So, we'll put that on the city website to ensure that the public has that going forward as well. And then we'll update that at least once a month so everybody knows the status of all those large projects. That's all.
I wanted to bring everybody up to speed about the YMCA and the feasibility study. And those who may not know, the, during the discussions, or after, actually physically after the discussions of the Indigo Project or Water View, Water Way, Alderman Carroll came up with an idea of talking about YMCA. That led to a variety of different meetings with a variety of different people from this, from the YMCA to Bald Head Island, Inc., to the county, to the third person, the third, third entity that runs all the senior centers in the city. We, we had a bunch of meetings on that. And at the end of the day, Bald Head Island, Inc. has agreed to pay for a feasibility study to see if the YMCA can be put into the city. They have delivered the check to the city. And on Thursday, we're going to take action to do the technical movement of that from amending the budget issue, budget issue. And then that money would go out the door to the YMCA. And then the report comes to us on the feasibility study. So, we get to see it and talk about it and negotiate with the, with the people with it there. I just wanted to make sure that we all knew that that was what was happening. I'm glad that Elena is going to, has, is following up with the manager's roundtable. That is an excellent, excellent opportunity for the businesses who have never had the opportunity to actually meet with the city staff on a regular basis. And so, they're meeting, I think, once a month now. That's how they do it. And I had an interesting, I know this is going to be a little long-winded, I apologize. I had an interesting set of conversations recently that reminded me of the conversation that Chief Tru had here the other day in which we think we're doing a great job of communicating. We all do. The Historic Society, Historic Commission people did everything they were supposed to do. They notified it the correct way. Everything was done. And then we had a public hearing and all these people came in and were, they had, I think they had some interesting observations about the whole thing. In the end, the process worked exactly like government's supposed to work. The citizens came in, they were civil, they had questions. The Historic Society, so our commission went back, reviewed those questions. I think you're going to make recommendations on Thursday, on Thursday the 14th about changes. So, it worked exactly right. But what's, what caught my eye was the fact that after all the communications that we sit in this building, and even when it sometimes gets into the press, it's just not getting there. Last night, I was sitting in a restaurant at nine o'clock last night and a guy came up to me and he wanted to know why we had approved the Indigo Project with only one entrance and exit. And a lot of people, he said he had talked to, and that's what they truly believe. They think it's only one onto Robert Rourke. And so, as much as we try to talk about the things, somehow our message going on, the biggest message that we've missed is the stormwater. This is, the city has a laundry list of things that the city is doing on stormwater that this board has approved and pushed forward and all of those things the manager and the staff has done. And I watch the social media buzz thing once in a while when I, when I have a headache. And it's amazing that they don't think we're doing anything, that, that we have never heard of the word Fodell Avenue, the words Fodo Avenue. We've never heard of anything. And we have done a lot of things. And I'm not sure how we communicate from the Public Works people who have done this work in the past, but truly, they have stepped up their game. They've stepped up their game in putting, fixing all the drains. They're putting pipes in. As the managers have said, they're going to start working on those ditches along Fodell Street to clear them out. They haven't been cleared out in years. All of those things from them. Then there's grants and there's mapping of the stormwater and there's, there's engineering studies in order to get more grants. All of these things are going on. Have we got some grants? All those things are going on, yet we cannot seem to be able to communicate that to the wider audience. And it was clear watching this weekend, all this conversation going on, that we're somehow, and I have no answer to my own problem about how we communicate that better. I would ask, since we have the port pilot here, I would ask him to help us. When the city's doing something good, I'd like to make sure that the city, the people know that the city's doing something good because we certainly will hear it when we are not doing something good. And this is, this is a case of government doing what they're supposed to do. So, I just bring that to your attention and I'm sorry that it's as long-winded as it is. And with that, I will start with Alderman Mosteller. For comment, I'm sorry. Okay. If we, if we get to her, we skip. I'm really surprised. You know I love you. So, Alderman Carroll.
So, thank you. To build on Noah's efforts as it relates to the businesses, I would like to create an ad hoc committee to review neighboring communities' guidelines for business advisory committee where the businesses actually have a regular... where the businesses actually have a regular bit of feedback to us. And so I'm willing to be on that. And I think two other people on this board currently have businesses in the city. So I would recommend that maybe if Mark and Rebecca are willing to do that, that we try to put something together to that effect.
Well, technically, it's the purview of the manager, of the mayor to do that. I'm not opposed to what you're saying. I would ask you, can we hold off on that until Thursday the 14th to find out if there's something that's already out there that we can look, call it a poll?
There is. I've, I've been pulling the stuff from Oak Island.
Okay.
They have a business advisory board in place. So I've been pulling that information and I've talked to the manager about it as well. But I mean, we can cer, and he's, I think, certainly receptive to the idea.
I just wondered if there's a way that we, the, the staff could just pull it all together for us instead of having an advisory board for doing it. I'm not going to say no to you. I'm just asking you, would you consider allowing it to wait till the 14th?
Yes.
Okay. And.
And I'll just.
And we'll put it, we'll put it on the agenda. Okay?
I'll get everything to Noah that I have and then we'll go from there.
Thank you. Anything else, sir? Alderman Davis.
Just briefly, believe it or not. I know you must have misspoke when you told the pilot what to do. You, we can't do that. We're, you, you said you wanted them to start the reporting on the good things that the.
I think I said I hope they would.
Okay. Good to be clear on this. But that, I've been thinking about this too. And I am wondering if Noah would be interested in perhaps putting into the paper, either paid or perhaps, I'm sorry. Allergy. Perhaps the paper would donate a space for your weekly report. So that's the only other way I can think of to get to people other than each of us going and knocking on people's doors and telling them what's going on. And I do not volunteer for that.
Are you done, ma'am?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Could you hit the button, please? I would leave that to the manager to see if, if that's possible. And yes, I do know that I'm not ordering the port pilot to do anything. Bayer Protemp. Alderman Spencer.
I would enjoy, I would definitely be agreeable to being a part of anything to help work with our, our businesses. It just seems like there's a disconnect between what we do in terms of providing all these events and doing this type of for the external visitor versus taking care of our businesses and doing what will help our businesses more than what will help the outside entities that come and do our festivals. I sat in the first roundtable where I, I sat in the corner, I think you and I were in the corner, and I heard them say, when these events come, we don't do as well. And that has stuck with me and I think that we've got to really think about how we do business with, and, and interact with them. So I would love to be a part of that if that came, if that came available. Otherwise, I don't think I have anything.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Lang.
I, I agree with Alderman Davis. I think we need to have some mechanism through the newspaper where, where we can get Noah's weekly report in there that shows what we're doing. That something is actually getting done. I think that's an excellent idea. We gotta find a way to do that. And I'd also like to thank Elena and whatnot for all the work that they're doing. Thank you.
Okay. I now entertain the motion to go into closed session. Well, I gotta read this numbers. Under North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11, this is for, for human resource issues. So is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Is there any conversation on it? Not hearing, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. We stand in closed, closed session?
I'd like to entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
Can so move?
Second.
Has a motion and a second, any discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor please say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Has a motion and a second, any discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor please say aye. Is there any opposed? It's unanimous, we stand adjourned.